Counsel will convene for the purpose of receiving public speak out. We're joined in the chamber by Counselor Allen, Counselor Fenton, and Counselor Walsh. Currently, we are not joined virtually by any members of the council. We have one individual signed up to speak out this evening. That individual is Rhonda Latney. Ms. Latney, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Latney, and I own property here in the city of Springfield. I'm here tonight to express my concerns of no transparency regarding the Hampton Superior Court order in April 2021, ruling of the Board of Commissioner to oversee the Springfield Police Department, which took root in September 2021, thanks to future President Donald Trump in April 2018 of his only administration in investigation of the Springfield Police Department Narcotics Division. There's a major concern of no trust transparency in the investigation of police misconduct due to my filings and the concealment, conspiracy, and criminal practices regarding two separate complaints that was filed against Resort Officer Lawrence Petucci in January 28, 2019, and a complaint against Sergeant Karen Simmons and Detective Gregory McCain of the Springfield Special Victims Unit in 2020 of elder abuse, fraud, and scam, and the appointment of retired Judge John Payne in 2021 to the Community Police Hearing Board by Mira Sano. In retrospective to the settlement agreement, section Accountability, which addresses the duties of conduct and reporting, misconduct, complaint intake, investigation, and education. First, on behalf of my grandson, Kamari Latney, who graduated this year from Central High School as one of the most recognized football athletes on January 28, 2019. I'm sorry. On January 28, 2019, my daughter and I filed a complaint with the Internal Investigation Unit against Resort Officer Lawrence Petucci regarding his filing of a fraudulent complaint of an assault against my grandson while attending Colley Middle School on Friday, December 6, 2020, incident number 18141140F, call number 18257713. The day of the hearing with Assistant Principal Mark Delude, there was no mentioning of an assault against Officer Petucci and no mention of assault in the short-term suspension determination letter dated on December 6, 2018, which is the same date of the fraudulent police report by Officer Petucci. A note on this suspension letter was for a return date for migrants and back to school for Monday, December 10, 2018. The Internal Investigation Unit's complaint was on file for three years in the Springfield Police Department until the investigation was completed on February 2, 2022 with the following statement: "After careful consideration of the results of this investigation, it was determined that in this case, there were no violations of Springfield Police Department." The Springfield Police Department would take no further action, and Officer Petucci was exonerated. Based on the complaint date for the Internal Investigation Unit complaint on January 28, 2019, said a presence of violations of the Springfield Police Department and the Internal Investigation Unit due to the filing date against Resort Officer Lawrence Petucci, who was involved in a second incident of an assault against a Colley Middle School student approximately a month after on April 2019. On December 2019, Officer Petucci admitted to the shoving of the student and received one-year probation. The complaint filed against Officer Petucci on January 20, 2019 was submitted with six documents to support his actions of filing a fraudulent police report, excuse me, in a three-page letter submitted by me, which state the following: "The timelines and actions of Officer Petucci filing a report which apparently was already in motion during our meeting on December 11, 2018, and not sharing that information points a picture of a person with clandestine and deceptive characters." Characteristics which, in my personal belief and opinion, are not the qualities or types of a resource officer and supports my concern on historical institution and cultural racism. Officer Petucci's actions were well in line with the school-to-prison pipeline, increased racial tension, and the swirly community, and raised the problems and concern with the criminal investigation system. Also, the Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission, known as POST, which was made known to the public on August 22, 2023, on page 495 of the POST Commission's sustained actions and discipline action, shows Officer Petucci, prior to my full unfiling and complaint against him, had three incidents against him: March 31, 2009, use of force; August 2, 2016, other misconduct; and September 13, 2016, other misconduct. The concealment and conspiracy of the Springfield Police Department and the Internal Investigation Unit complaint filed on behalf of my grandson was concealed due to Officer Petucci's three previous incidents and his abrupt assault against the second Colley Middle School student on April 29, 2019, which also documented on page 495 of the POST Commission report. Officer Petucci received a five-day suspension and a 30-day suspension, but was allowed to go back and presume his job as the Springfield Police Department, as the Springfield Police Officer. If this information was provided then when he went to court, it would result in Officer Petucci being fired from the Springfield Police Department, and perhaps it would have avoided him assaulting another student. Second since May 2020, Wayman Rainey and myself have been advocating for the social justice movement for the deceased 109-year-old Alberta Dolly Howard, whose death was due to elder abuse, fraud, and scam, with the support of public officials, employees, and their related agencies, in the homicides of Alberta Howard and her son, Perez Pico Howard, by James Charles Vogts. Springfield Special Victims Unit, spearheaded by Sergeant Karen Simmons, who was assigned with District Attorney's Office and Detective Gregory McCain, Superintendent Cheryl Caprul, and Captain Trent Duda, conducted the investigation of elder abuse of the then-107-year-old Alberta Dolly Howard by James Vogts, who was and is still impersonating to be the nephew of Alberta Howard and cousin of Perez Pico Howard. On June 18, 2020, October 26, 2020, complaints were filed in person, and in 2022, using an online complaint of the investigation internal unit for fraud and scams of the now-deceased Alberta Dolly Howard, who died February 5, 2022. The Division of Human Health Services and Helen Carlton Harris... Excuse me.
Ms. Latney?
Yes.
Your time has expired.
Okay, so I'm so sad that there's no one else here speaking, but here's a visual diagram of the corruption with Mira Sano, Superintendent Cheryl Caprul, and Judge John Payne. Judge John Payne was the person who presided on the elderly abuse, fraud, and scam of Alberta Howard on Commonwealth versus Jane Vogts, document number 2023CR02756, for the felony of elderly abuse. At no time did Judge Payne or District Attorney Gugliani or Assistant District Attorney Joan O'Brien provide advocacy protection for Alberta Howard or myself, Wayman Rainey. Mira Sano signed Judge Payne when he retired as being judge to the Board of Commissioner, the Springfield Community Police Hearing Board on June 21, 2021, and then as City Solicitor on June 4, 2022. These three people's names are on the consent agreement that Trump put in place due to the investigation of the Narcotics Division. When Alberta Howard died on June 10, 2020, I'm sorry, was buried on June 10, 2020, Mira Sano met with the pastor that facilitated on her burial. But however, on the document that he wrote for her birthday, 109th birthday, at the Kiowa Nursing Home, he refused to send it to her. And this is the crime and corruption in the city of Springfield, where Mira Sano, his administration, and all these agencies that are signed to protect the elder. I brought this to the city council members back in 2021. We filed every agency to investigate this corruption that is well documented, with over 500 documents and public police reports. By not acting on this, it's providing a safety issue for all people in the city of Springfield, and this is what the city of Springfield is hiding from the public and the people. I have documents that I will be passing throughout the city that expose the corruption in the city of Springfield regarding their investigations into the Internal Investigation Unit and your consent decree. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latney. Counsel will stand adjourned until our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. Counsel will be in order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counselor Fenton?
Present.
Present, Counselor Perez?
Present.
Present, Counselor Whitfield?
Counselor Whitfield.
Absent, Counselor Govan?
Present.
Present, Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present, Counselor Brown?
Present.
Present, Counselor Erst?
Counselor Erst.
Absent, Counselor Click Bruce?
Present.
Present, Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present, Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present, Counsel Davila?
Counsel Davila.
Absent, Counsel Letterman?
Present. Will the counsel and guests please rise and join me in a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can all be seated. Before we begin, please let the record reflect that Counselors Perez, Curran, and Govan are participating in the proceedings this evening remotely. Also, before we hear the reports of committee, certainly, we want to show appreciation for our Chief Administrative and Financial Officer, TJ Plant, who announced today he'll be leaving the city of Springfield's employ after 16 years. Cafo Plant, I know I speak for the entire council when I say we are appreciative of your service throughout all these years, and will be presenting an official proclamation for the Cafo before our next hearings meeting, so we'll have time to reflect on all of our unique relationships with him at that time. But on behalf of the city, we thank you for your service, Cafo Plant. At this time, are there any reports of committee? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee, since our last meeting here, Finance Committee met three times: last Thursday, the Thursday before that, and this afternoon, a couple times this afternoon. We had a 3:30 meeting today and also a 5:30 meeting today. The 5:30 meeting today was the normal one we have before regular meetings, where we go over the items on the agenda. There were no big takeaways from that. I was the only member of the Finance Committee who was at that meeting, so we couldn't take a vote. But I would say the items that were discussed were pretty much regular items that didn't require any further discussion or disagreement or anything. However, the 3:30 meeting today, the topic was the Tapley Street issue, which is also what the two previous Thursday meetings were. So we had three meetings since we were here last on the Tapley Street issue. I will go into it in more detail later when the item comes up, but it did require an hour and a half of, well, probably, today was an hour and a half, and we had Counselor Fenton, Counselor Whitfield, Mr. Chris Signoli, Tom Moore, Ken Shea, Tracy Whitfield. Counselor Whitfield was on the meeting, and the previous two meetings on that, Counselor Govan was on. So we've had a lot of participation on the Tapley Street issue. We think we have a resolution, et cetera, but I'll go over that later when the item comes up on the agenda. That's the report of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't believe that I reported on the Health and Human Services Committee meeting that we had on August 3, actually. So that was a Health and Human Services Committee meeting with the Fire Chief, Sandy Federigo was there, the Elder Affairs and resident, actually, who brought this to my attention and requested that I bring it up at committee. So I did have a committee meeting regarding the Knox boxes, and I'm not sure if a lot of people have heard about that, but it was something that this resident thought was very important for the residents of the city to know, and we are hopefully in communication with Health and Human Services Commission as well as the Fire Department to see how we can get this information out to the residents to let them know that it is available, and if they are interested in it, to find ways where they can access the Knox boxes. Let me see what counselors were there. I apologize. Okay, I don't see any other counselors that were there. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Allen was there.
Because it was my constituent, yeah.
That was his constituent, yes. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Are there any further reports of committee?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I did chair a Public Safety Committee for Counselor Click Bruce at the end of July. I don't know if you wanted me to report on that, Counselor Click Bruce. Oh, he's not here.
Yes.
I could report on that if you want me to, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Counselor Govan.
Okay, so there was a Public Safety Committee. Counselors who were in attendance were Counselor Perez and Counselor Curran, Judge Payne and Kathy Breck were there, and this was regarding the Board of Police Commissions. And we were just informed that they were working on a manual. Commissioner Trangrisi was there, and Commissioner Birdy were there as well. So we discussed the Board of Police Commissions on that day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Are there any further reports of committee? Seeing none, before we take a vote on accepting the reports, Madam Clerk, can you please recognize Counselor Davila?
Counselor Davila?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and let the record reflect that Counselor Davila is participating in the proceeding remotely. At this time, if there's no further reports of committee without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll to accept the reports.
On accepting the reports of committee, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield? Absent, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Erst? Absent, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The reports are accepted. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Item number one, July Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Mr. Burns, soon to be interim Cafo Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have the July Revenue versus Expenditure Report. This represents the first month of fiscal year 2024. There are two items I'd like to draw your attention to. The first is in the revenue section. It is a net school spending carryover. This is a partial appropriation of $3 million. We are still working with the school department to finalize the amount for this fiscal year. It will actually be the carry forward from 2023. Just for reference, the 23 carryover amount in the budget last year was 20.3 million. On the expenditure side, the city made their appropriation payment to the Springfield contributory retirement system on Monday, July 3. This payment was approximately $90.1 million. $62.5 was the city portion, and $27.5 million was the school portion. The payment in total for the three-member units, which also includes the Water and Sewer and the Housing Authority, was $101,682,626, of which 8.1 was from the Water and Sewer Commission and 3.4 was from the Springfield Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Are there any questions on the Revenue versus Expenditure Report? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the report.
Accepting the report of July Revenue versus Expenditure. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Counselor Perez? Absent, Counsel Whitfield? Absent, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The report is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item two.
Item number two, Verizon St. James Avenue Petition.
Director Signoli?
Good evening, Counselors. Chris Signoli, DPW Director. The one petition on the agenda for this evening is for Verizon. It is for the relocation of one utility pole at the intersection of St. James and Tapley Street, and this is for the advancement of the St. James and Tapley Street Intersection Reconstruction Project.
Thank you, Director Signoli. Before we hear questions, Madam Clerk, please recognize Counselor Whitfield.
Counselor Whitfield?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record reflect that Counselor Whitfield is participating remotely. Are there any questions for Director Signoli relative to the petition? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the petition.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The petition is approved.
Thank you, Counselors.
Madam Clerk, please call item three.
Sorry. Item number three, it's a grant from Bromfield Assessment Grant, $500,000.
Mr. Connors?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Brian Connors, Office of Planning and Economic Development. This item is to accept a $500,000 grant awarded to the city by the Environmental Protection Agency for brownfield site assessments. This will be utilized to test and assess contaminated properties throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Are there any questions? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on accepting the grant.
Counsel Walsh? Absent, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
I have here FY '24 Senior Community Service Employment Grant, $473,500.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item?
Yes, Helen Carlton Harris. I'm representing the Department of Elder Affairs. This is our senior aid grant. It's an annual grant. We have had this grant for over 20 years, actually, and you will recognize it as a grant where we employ seniors over the age of 55. We post them into departments and businesses so that they can learn skills and re-enter the workforce.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions on the grant? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item five.
I have here item number five, FY '24 Council Agent Grant, $53,920.
Director Carlton Harris?
Yes, this is our grant that we have had on an annualized basis. It is a formula grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The majority of the grant is used for salaries for staff. There is a small line item, that is $2,000, that is used for office supplies.
Thank you, Director, or Commissioner. Are there any questions for the Commissioner on the grant? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item six.
FY '24 Springfield Library Donation, Salary Offset, $145,000.
Director Fogarty gave me my first job in local government. Welcome back to the chambers.
It was a pleasure. I hope I got you good off for a good career there and maybe come back to libraries something else.
Well, I'll be available in January, but go ahead.
I'm Molly Fogarty, Library Director. This is funding from our library foundation, and it's used to offset salaries, Sunday hours at the central library, and computer hardware.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions on the grant? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the grant.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item seven.
State 911 Support and Incentive Grants Increase, $125,000.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Deputy Caffo?
Deputy Director for 911.
Go ahead, Ms. Caffo.
The incentive grant is offered by the State 911 Department, and it was increased this year by $125,000 as a stipend for 911 centers that utilize a combined behavioral health response. So the amount of the grant increased from $992,816 up to $1,117,816 as an incentive from the state for having a behavioral health co-response in the city.
Thank you for the details. Are there any questions on the grant? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst? Absent, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, and the grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, items?
Eight through 21.
Nine.
Items eight through 21 are all grants under $50,000, and in accordance with our rules, can be taken together. So what I'm going to do is ask you to read each individual grant, items eight through 21. Items eight through 21 are all grants under $50,000, and in accordance with our rules, can be taken together. So, what I'm going to do is ask you to read each individual grant, items eight through 21, and then if there are questions on any of those, we'll take them after they have all been read.
Item number eight, FY24 Veterinarian Grant, $52,000.
Madam Clerk, if you could just speak a little more directly into the microphone. It's okay if you need to sit.
Okay. Item number eight, FY24 Veterinarian Grant, Donation, $52,000. Item number nine, FY24 Springfield Library Foundation, $40,000. Item number 10, Burn Jack Grant, $40,000. Item number 11, FY24 Springfield Library Foundation, $30,000. Item number 12, FY24 Vet Tech, $28,282.48. Item number 13, FY24 Vet Tech Grant, $23,215.75. Item number 14, FY24 Springfield Library Foundation Summer Reading Program, $20,000. Item number 15, Community Mitigation, $19,800. Item number 16 is Dispatch, $14,177. Item number 17, Fire Grants, $12,000. Item number 18, COPS Anti-Errein Task, $10,000. Item number 19, FY24 Springfield Library Grant, $40,000. FY24 Library Staff Development Grant, $10,000. FY24 Springfield Library, $10,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And item eight is actually $52,000. So, what we'll do is we'll take nine through 21 right now. Are there any questions from any councilors on items nine through 21 prior to our vote? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on approval of grant acceptances for items nine through 21.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst. Absent Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The grants are accepted. Madam Clerk, please call that item eight.
Item number eight, FY24 Veterinarian Grant, $52,000.
Is there anyone here to speak on item eight? Foundation for TJO Animals.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order is for a $52,000 grant for TJO from the TJO Foundation, and it's to offset costs for their veterinarian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, or Madam Deputy Caffo. Are there any questions on the grant? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on acceptance of the grant.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst. Absent Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The grant is accepted. Madam Clerk, please call item 22. Counsel Fenton?
Mr. President, if I could, items 26, 27, 28, and 29 are all orders for less than $50,000 for gifts to the city, so would make a motion that we take items 26, 27, 28, and 29 at this time together, just as we did for the grants.
What about 30 and 31? They're also, 30 and 31 are also in that category.
I think those are real estate transactions, though, that's why.
Okay, they look like donations.
Thank you. Counsel Fenton has made a motion that we take 26, 27, 28, and 29 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Walsh. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role... Counselor Allen?
Do we want 26, the taking for Tapley Street? Am I, am I, my numbers off, or I thought we want to hold on that?
Well, I apologize, Mr. President. There might be some differences between the agenda I'm looking at and the one that councilors have printed. I'm looking at the one that's available online on the city's calendar. So, number 26 is donation of goods to the Department of Elder Affairs, a pool table. Item 27 is a donation for $18,115 to TJO. Item number 28 is a $1,000 donation of the library. 29 is a donation of $100 to the library.
Counsel Fenton, you are correct. The online agenda is the updated agenda. When the executive session was added, the agenda changed, and so there were some agendas, I think, in the office that had the old numbers on them. However, just prior to the meeting, we did reprint them. So, if you took an agenda that does not have the executive session on it, your numbers are wrong.
Okay.
And Sean can assist you with securing a correct agenda, should you need one. So, the motion from Counsel Fenton is items 26, 27, 28, and 29 together.
Correct.
And seconded by Counsel Walsh. There's been no discussion. And seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the role on taking those items together. This is a vote on the motion to take them together. This is not a vote on the items. Counsel Brown on the motion.
Pointable. I'm just curious. So, this one isn't the Tapley Street one, isn't in that one, correct? Okay.
Correct. This is just the financial orders to accept some small donations. Seeing no further discussion, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on Counsel Fenton's motion to take these items together.
On the motion, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst. Absent Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, please read...
Mr. President, I think we're going to have a long discussion on Tapley. I'd like to ask, we take item, if item 32 is the 58 in Dale Street, can we take that out of order?
Counselor, we can take up that motion after we take the vote on these orders. Again, that's a real estate transaction, so it'll require a two-thirds majority vote for us to get to that. So, if we could take the orders that we just authorized, and then we'll come to your motion. So, at this time, Madam Clerk, please call and read items 26, 27, 28, and 29.
Item number 26, Donation Grants from Elder Affairs, it's a pool table. Item number 27, Thomas J. O'Connor Donation, $8,115. Springfield City Library Donation at $1,000. Item number 29, Springfield's Library Donation, $100. And item number 30, authorizing the mayor to execute quick claim deeds, consideration of $5,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. To be clear, we're only taking 26 through 29 on this motion. Are there questions from the council on any one of those items 26 through 29? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on accepting the donations authorized in items 26, 27, 28, and 29.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Erst. Absent Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The donations are accepted. Please let the donors know they have the gratitude of the Springfield City Council. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, could we take item 32 in Dale Street out of order? Since we do have people present, and I think we're going to have a long discussion on Tapley Street.
Counsel Walsh, I'm just looking on the updated agenda for that item.
It's 32 on this one. I don't know what it is.
Your current agenda that you're looking at is incorrect.
It's item 30.
Item 30, yeah. So, the motion from Counsel Walsh, the request from Counsel Walsh is to take item 30 out of order. Is there any objection? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call item 30.
I have here order authorizing mayor to execute quick claim deeds for sale of 58 at Dale Street.
And is there anybody here to speak to this item?
Yes, Tina Quaglio O'Sullivan, the city's Director of Disaster Recovery. This property was foreclosed by the city for the non-payment of taxes. It is a single-family vacant home. It has been, it was disposed of through a request for proposal process, of which Concerned Citizens for Springfield was selected as the preferred developer. They will be rehabbing the home, and also, this will be a pilot project for a, getting as close to possible to a net zero home, which would make homeownership more sustainable and affordable for the ultimate buyer. The home would be resold to a first-time homebuyer who is at or below 80% of area median income, and the council has already approved this project in some form, as the project is receiving CPA funds.
Thank you, Director Sullivan. Are there any questions from members of the council? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call item six. Thank you, Director Sullivan. Are there any questions from members of the council? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on authorizing the deed for sale. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
And item number 30, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel, excuse me, Counsel Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
of area median income, and the council has already approved this project in some form as the project is receiving CPA funds.
Thank you, Director Sullivan. Are there any questions from members of the council? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on authorizing the deed for sale. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
And item number thirty, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council, excuse me, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Earth, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient, the deed transfer is approved. Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that Councilor Davila has joined us now in person, and please call item twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two, order authorizing mayor to execute quick claim deed sale for the former Gemini building for a consideration of fifty thousand dollars.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Good evening, Jerry McCafferty, Director of Housing. This is seeking authorization for the sale of fifteen parcels that make up the Gemini site. It's about two-point-two acres, selling it for fifty thousand dollars to Home City Development Incorporated. This is long vacant property that was foreclosed on by the city for non-payment of taxes. After, after an RFP process, Home City Development was selected to develop forty new townhome houses for homeownership. They will be, eight of them will be available to households with incomes at or below eighty percent of the metropolitan area's median income, and the remaining thirty-two will be affordable to households with one hundred percent of the area median income. This is over fourteen million dollars of development, and includes two bedrooms and three bedrooms in it. It has already received zoning approval permits, and they have full acquisition and development financing. Home City has met with the neighborhood association, which is in agreement with this, which supports this, this development.
Thank you, Director McCafferty. Are there any questions from members of the council? Councilor Brown?
How many other applicants applied?
I believe this was the only applicant.
Home City Housing was the only applicant that applied for this? Yes?
I believe, I believe so.
And what were the means as far as advertising for this particular piece of property?
So I will say I was not, I was not involved in this, in this. However, I can say we, a property, any property, we put in the central register, we do it through the procurement office, so it is advertised in the central register. It is advertised for a minimum of thirty days, and that is sort of our customary procurement procedure.
And I, the reason why I ask is I, I do commend Home City Housing for the work that they do in the community, and they do an excellent job, so I do commend them, but for some reason, it just seems like when the field of participants seems to only be Home City Housing and maybe Wayfinders, I know there are other applicants and people who own businesses who would, I mean, who wouldn't want this piece of property. I, I just find it so hard to believe, but, I mean, it is what it is, but, thank you.
I would say this is, this property is taking considerable public money. Most of the funding is, the, the city is putting funds in it as well, but most of the funding is from mass housing. This would not have, for the prices that they're selling the properties, for the homes for, this would not make a profit. There was a gap between the development cost and the sales price, which is filled with public money.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of, working for my full-time job, I'm aware that there's programs and things where anyone can take advantage to fulfill those gaps and obligations through certain programs by doing so. So it's just still, like I said, if, if Home City Housing and Wayfinder can do it, there's other people who can do it and still qualify the same way for the different perks from state and federal funding. But once again, I do think they do a great job. I don't want to hold up time, but, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Brown. Councilor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna have to agree with Councilor Brown. Where is this property located again?
This is in the South End, Central Street, and Main, and Morris.
I think that, and we've said this a lot of times, that the advertisement needs to be done better, because it's gonna make a profit, because a lot of the funds don't have to be paid back to the state and the federal government, so there will be a profit made off of the sales of these homes, especially if you're not using any of your own money to develop them, so I don't know if that's a true statement. I'm pretty sure that they had to put in some of their own funding as well, but when, most of the funds come from tax credits and other mass housing programs, some, some bonding, some loans, but some are grants as well, that don't have to be paid back, because I, in my day job as well, we look into these types of fundings a lot, to help some of the small, smaller minority developers gain access to this type of funding. So what I would like to see, and what I also would want to know is, it, do these properties have to follow the REO requirements? And also, is there any type of equitable clause in their application that says they're gonna hire locally, women, veterans, folks of color? Like, is any of that in their application, or does it matter because they were the only one?
I believe that there was in their application. I do not have their application in front of me. I know that, I, I believe the, there is a minor, the general contractor is minority company that is local, and I know that they have verbally talked about their, their commitments and their ability to, and that they have already engaged local contractors and subcontractors as well. I would say this is a developer who is very committed to local hiring.
And I, and I do also give a great shout-out to Home City Development. I also think that they do great work, but I just want, like, the big contracts sometimes too, to go to some of the smaller developers. Who, who do you say the general contractor is?
I believe it's Henry General Construction.
And, and is Henry General Construction local?
I believe so.
Just for the record, the leadership of Home City Housing is in the chamber and available to councilors for questioning.
Oh, okay, can, well, let's bring on the leader, so we can get real concise answers. Can we do that, Mr. President?
Certainly. Mr. McCoy, if you could step forward and, or Mr. Kegelman, whichever one of you will be speaking, or both, if you could step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jasper McCoy. My address is two sixty-one Oak Grove. I am the project manager for the Gemini Townhome Project at eighty-nine Morris Street that we're currently talking about.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy, and Councilor Whitfield has the floor.
Thank you. Hi Jasper, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good, so I, you've heard my questions as far as the developer, is that a local contractor?
Yeah, Brian Henry is here in Springfield. Brian Henry is finishing out a developer track where we had a lot of minority contractors doing federal work, and he's now transitioning back into residential work here in Springfield, Mass. So he had done a lot of work here managing the renovation of homes, I think, eight or nine years ago, before he went into federal work, and now he's returning back home to do a little bit bigger projects.
Okay, and he's a person of color, Henry McCoy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I mean, not Henry McCoy, Henry, I forgot what you said the last name.
Brian Henry.
Okay, so that's, that's basically what I wanted to know, so I'm, I'm actually happy to hear that, Jasper. And like I said, this is not a dig against Home City Development at all, it's really that we've been asking for procurement and other city departments to advertise, and more than just maybe the Republican in a small section in the back is not highlighted on the front page or anything, and, like, getting the word out more to local contractors in Springfield, so definitely happy that Home City Development are gonna be developing more of these affordable housing opportunities, but we just really need to have a fair, equitable process where anyone can bid on these things, and not just the person who wants the site, because usually that's how it happens, you go and you talk to the department, and then the department will advertise it, but nobody's gonna see it, because no one knows that anyone else is interested in it, and then that person ends up being the only, the sole bidder, and I don't think that's a fair process at all. And I know this because I sat in the office and spoke about it, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Whitfield. Council Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Jasper, thank you for being here, and when I first saw this, this order, I was happy to see it, as we know, we have a crisis here in the city, a housing crisis we are, so this is a welcoming, a welcome sight, but I just have some general question to you, my good sir. I believe that you said this is forty units, correct?
It's forty units.
Excuse me, and that translates to roughly, how many people per unit?
The two bedrooms have a maximum or a key factor of about three people per home, and the four, sorry, the three bedrooms have four, and so when you go over that, it becomes a housing issue, so I would say we have twenty-four two bedrooms, which would account for seventy-two people, and then we have a remaining of sixteen three bedrooms, which would account for forty-eight.
So what's the expected total number of people that are going to be housed there, roughly?
If my math is correct, then give me one second.
You're doing that in your head?
I am.
Oh, boy, I'm impressed.
I'm product of Springfield Public Schools.
That's a good, good.
We got seventy-two plus forty-eight, that should be a hundred and ten, I believe? Twenty, there we go, appreciate y'all.
Okay, okay, all right, good, good. And now, how many expected jobs is this gonna create during construction?
So that is a hard factor to kind of put together, but we do have a minority general contractor who is hiring locally, we do have a local marketing team.
Well, I'm sorry, would you mind speaking a little louder? I can hear you.
We do have a local marketing team who's working on this, and we do have a local geotech, so we do have a lot of jobs here in the city, but sustained jobs throughout the construction, I can't really estimate that, so I apologize.
Okay, all right, and what's the expected construction time on this project?
We're scheduled for eighteen months.
Eighteen months, starting?
We're hoping to close in the next two to three weeks and start construction a month later.
Right, Mr. Jasper, if I recall correctly, there was an issue with the ground there after the fire, there was contamination on the ground, that issue has been fully resolved.
Absolutely, so the Gemini Factory burned down in two thousand and four, I believe, and it was remediated by the city in two thousand and eight, and we finally got that closed out through OTO and got the clearance to move on to the site. The construction is going to take a lot of ground remediation on our end, although it was clean for environmental reasons, the soil was not prepared for a building to go on it, so we are actually putting geotech piers down to ensure that our buildings are sound for our residents.
Right, right, all right, thank you, Mr. Jasper, I think this is a good project. I'm excited that we're getting forty more units, that roughly about a hundred and twenty people are going to be, benefit on this. The other thing is I urge you, which I'm sure you guys will, to ensure that the jobs stay in Springfield to the best of your abilities, because this is a Springfield project, there should be Springfield jobs, so, thank you, sir, and, Mr. President, I'd be happy to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Davila. Council Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm also excited about this project going up. There's gonna be forty new homes that are gonna be for sale, and I don't know if Director McCafferty, you said that eighty, I mean, eight of those homes will be eligible for the eighty percent below the median income and a hundred percent? I didn't understand that part of it.
Eight of the units will be made available to households with incomes up to eighty percent of the area median income. The remaining thirty-two are sold to households with incomes up to one hundred percent of the area median income.
Okay, so?
So, median income, so they are available to people who are at the metropolitan area median income, at the, you know, the hundred percent is what the median income is.
Right, right, okay, all right, well, that's exciting to hear, I'm really glad for that. Yeah, though, and the concerns that Council Whitfield and Council Brown brought up, I think, were valid. I know that, I have spoken to Home City Housing, I have met with Mr. McCoy, and I think that the work that they do is great, I'm, I would love for them, we had actually a house out here in Indian Orchard that went out to RFP, and a few people looked at it, and the house is still vacant, so I'd love for Home City Housing to look at it. I don't know if the RFP is still out, but I'll definitely vote in favor of this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Govan. Are there any further questions for Director McCafferty or the developer prior to our vote on the execution of the deed? Council Perez?
Yes, just for the record, Home City Housing doesn't only construct houses, but they engage with the, with the tenants as well. They have a good project on law of liberty, and I have participated in many other projects when it comes to engagement with the family, so I will be voting in favor and support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Perez. Are there any further questions? Council Brown?
I just had one quick one. You have a contractor, is every, all the, is all the actual different, like, say, the roofs and things like that, is that all subbed out yet? Or are you still looking for potential contractors? Are they gonna be subbing that stuff out?
So we currently have a working bid, and we finalized our contract, so all of that is set in stone.
So there is a, so, no, there are, no one can actually, if they were interested in maybe subbing out, like, the painting or anything like that, none is, none of that is available?
As the contractor moves forward with the work, it's up to the contractors.
Because I've been just wondering, is there a number that I can have to kind of like give to maybe some of the contractors that I, that we come across, just to help promote maybe some of, maybe get in touch with some of the, the actual general contractor? Is there a contact?
Absolutely, we can share that right after the meeting, or I can get your contact information. One of the things that we're doing at Home City Development is working with local minority contractors, not only to increase their capacity, but our local depth of pool of people who can actually do work. So a lot of the issues that we have here is not that we don't have contractors, but they're not represented in the way that we can actually get them on projects. So this one of the Gemini Townhomes is pretty much all set, but I will take your contact information and make sure to share that with Brian Henry. We do have a Old Hill project we're working with the city of Springfield on, that should be up and coming in the next couple of months. We don't have a set contractor there, so we will be looking for more.
Okay, and you guys, that's, as far as Home City Housing, is there a contact person other than Brian, or he's gonna do all the projects, just from this point?
Oh, Brian doesn't work with Home City Development, but he's just on the Gemini Townhomes project.
I mean, the Old Hill, that's in my area.
Oh, that would be me.
Okay, if so, contacting you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Brown. Council Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Jasper, I just wanted to ask, how do you guys do your RFP process so that contractors like, as Council Brown was talking about, will know to even apply for some of these opportunities?
Could you clarify your question?
How do you guys get your request for proposals or your bids in to do the project work?
So we look for qualified contractors first, so we ask, and we send out to pretty much anybody we can find. We ask for them to submit their information of what they've done, how many years they've worked, what their bonding capacity is, and then their depth of people that can work. And so, a large issue that we've had in the last year and a half is not that people can't do the work, but the timeframe to turn around homes, and then also rental properties to people of Springfield. We are in a housing crisis, so the faster we can pump out affordable housing is better for our entire city, and so that's one of the key factors of who we choose and how well the project turns out. Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question, so you kind of just like shop around, but one, one thing that I would like to suggest, so that some of these, you know, some of the contractors can get up to speed, is maybe some type of mentorship or partnering program, so that they understand the process and what needs to be done and get up to speed, because a lot of the little guys are missing out on opportunities, you know, and they, they do want to learn and get in the field, just like the big guys, the bigger construction companies, and I know that, Jerry, I know, I see your hand up, but I do know that you all have met with some of the local minority developers and have meetings with some of the local minority developers, and I think that's great, but the more that we can do some mentorship opportunities and just like to train folks, the better off we are, because then we have more contractors that can do the work and can get them turned around faster, so, just a suggestion, but I will be supporting this as well, I do love the work that Home City Development does, I have been supportive of you guys for a long time, and yes, you do a lot of community work, as you should, because you get a lot of city money too, so I just wanted to say, good job, and I can't wait to see them.
Thank you, Council Whitfield.
Thank you, Council Whitfield. Are there any further questions prior to our vote on execution of the deed? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on authorizing the execution of the quick claim deed. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
Okay, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Earth, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes. Madam Clerk, please recognize Council Fenton.
Mr. President, I, I apologize, I made an error, I must abstain from this vote. Please reflect my vote as abstained.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Fenton will be reflected as having abstained, however, the votes are still sufficient and the execution is authorized. Madam Clerk, please call item twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three, collective bargaining agreement ratification, excuse me, Springfield Fire Chief Association.
Director Mahoney?
Good evening, Councilors, Bill Mahoney, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations. I'm pleased to report that we have a tentative agreement, two tentative agreements with the Springfield Fire Chiefs Association. It's for two, for two contracts, one is the period of July one, two thousand and twenty to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, the second contract is July one, twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty-four. The tentative agreement was reached on June twelfth, twenty-three. The COLIs for these, for these four years were two-and-a-half percent each year. We updated the grievance procedure language, we added Juneteenth as a holiday, we eliminated the current attendance incentive that's in the contract and mirrored the attendance incentive in the IAFF contract, so the whole department is kind of on the same one now. We increased the work week for the fire repair supervisor from thirty-seven-and-a-half hours to forty hours per week. We reduced the extra tours, there's a series of unpaid tours, it's from the nineteen ninety-nine agreement, it's called the Westfield Model. We were at eleven, we got down to ten in two thousand and seventeen, we're down to eight unpaid tours now. We have Article twenty-three, we eliminated the agency service fee language, which was as a result of the Janus Supreme Court decision a few years back. The, under Article twenty-four, we added language that the commissioner of the department has greater flexibility for locations of training and additional training programs. We added a cancer screening language consistent with, or similar to, the ordinance that the council had passed a few years back. We clarified some of the drug testing language. We tightened up our calculation on overtime, it was being done on thirty-minute intervals, we're now doing it on six-minute intervals, and on Article seven oh two, we changed the holiday compensation language for holiday eves versus holiday days.
Thank you, Director. Do you have anything further?
That's it.
Are there any questions for the Director relative to the collective bargaining agreement? Council Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Director. I believe you say that you increased the, they, we are increasing the work hours from thirty-seven-and-a-half to forty?
I'm, I'm, sorry.
I believe you say that we increasing the work hours from thirty-seven-and-a-half to forty hours.
Yeah, for one position, just one position, the fire apparatus repair supervisor, he, he was in at thirty-seven-and-a-half hours, and he was, ended up having a lower weekly wage than the rest of them, because they were all in at forty hours, so he's gonna have to work the extra hours, but he'll get the same weekly wage, that's the concept.
I see, and, I'm sorry, does this include any kind of a pay raise, that, which I didn't see, to be honest with you?
Yep, the pay raises is two-and-a-half percent each year for four years.
Do they get any kind of a one percent hazard pay, like the firefighters did?
No, we didn't do that with this group, what we did was we, we changed the attend, the attendance incentive instead to mirror, or pretty much mirrors the IAFF, which is also in this, this department, so it's, it's based on twelve years of service and eighteen-hundred hours of vacation, I'm sorry, sick leave accrual, in seventeen years and three thousand hours of sick leave accrual, versus instead what they had, was they had an attendance incentive where if you had perfect attendance, you got a thousand dollars, if you missed one day of work, you got seven hundred dollars, so we got rid of that, we put the new one in, so it's, we have a kind of consistency in the department.
I understand, I understand, all right, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Davila. Are there any further questions for the Director relative to the agreement? Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I was just curious, is there a reason why during this procedure, the actual individuals from the Fire Chiefs Association aren't present? Is it not, would, would they, how do we know they actually are thrilled about the negotiation? It seems kind of like late, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you guys do this, and then they say, hey, we don't really like this, and then now we could go into city council and we can figure out, you know, if it's a good deal or not? How do we know they like it? Do they like it?
Yeah, if I can answer that, Mr. President. Council, yes, so they've, I can't come to you until they've already ratified it, so the union has already voted on this, they voted in favor of it, once they do that, they notify me that they voted in favor, and I petition the city council. I also contacted their attorney today and put them on notice that we would be in front of you tonight, and I spoke with them on the phone about it, too.
And, and the only reason why I ask is because I know a lot of times when we go through a lot of these negotiations, it's almost like, you know, you're, you're pulling teeth, and sometimes a lot of the individuals, based on who's ever representing them, if they're strong or if they're weak as far as their representation, they always don't get the fair end. if they're strong or if they're weak as far as their representation, they always don't get the fair end. They just accept what they have to accept. And sometimes in that case, if you have a city council in front of them fighting for them, saying, hey, you know what? Maybe your union or whatever couldn't get you the other percentage, but maybe, you know, we can kick that back and get you another percentage on it. Uh, it just seems just kind of, I mean, but I guess that's how it, how we, how you do it. I just was odd, because I hear it all the time. A lot of times, these individuals, they're still not happy after negotiation peace, so it just was kind of odd, like we wouldn't have someone at least saying, hey, we love it, hey, we hate it. That, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Brown. Are there any further questions relative to the agreement? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on approval of the agreement.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The agreement is approved. Madam Clerk, item twenty-four, please.
Order, item number twenty-four, order authorizing approval of intergovernmental agreement with Springfield Businesses.
Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Mr. Connors?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian Connors, Office of Planning and Economic Development. Um, the item before you is authorizing the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Springfield and the Springfield Business Improvement District. Uh, this is an agreement that we, uh, reapprove every three, every three years. Uh, the bid has been in existence for twenty-five years, and it basically outlines the roles and responsibilities for both the bid and the city of Springfield. The funding associated with this has already been approved by council, uh, in the city budget.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Are there any questions on the agreement? Seeing none, without objection. Madam Clerk, please call the role on approving the agreement.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield? Council Whitfield? Absent Council Govan?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm here. Can you recall me, please?
Uh, Council Whitfield, we'll, we'll come back on your vote.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, we'll go to Council.
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes. Madam Clerk, please call Council Whitfield.
Yes. Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
And please call Council Govan.
Council Govan?
Yes.
Votes are sufficient. The agreement is approved. Madam Clerk, item twenty-five, please.
Item number twenty-five, bills of prior year, various department, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nine cents.
Deputy Caffo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Deputy Caffo, Lindsey Hackett, eighty-Tamarack Drive in Springfield. Um, this order is for, uh, bills of prior year, um, mostly for the HR department for unemployment bills. Um, there's also a small invoice for assessors and TJO. All of these invoices are for services rendered in previous fiscal years, and we're just asking for funding, um, to be able to use our FY twenty-four budget.
Thank you, Deputy Caffo. Are there any questions on the bills of prior year? Seeing no questions, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on approving the bills of prior year.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yeah.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The bills are approved. Madam Clerk, please call item thirty-one.
This ordinance amending chapter forty-nine, article eleven, section forty-nine dash five, um, forty-nine Chestnut Street, DMOR, FIA.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance is on for second and third step this evening. Uh, is there any discussion amongst the council prior to our vote on the ordinance? Seeing none? Council Fenton?
No.
Nope, okay. Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on, uh, approval of the ordinance.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yeah.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The ordinance passes. Is there a motion to invoke Rule twenty-two C to allow the ordinance to be finally passed this evening?
So moved.
Motion was made by Council Dabila to invoke Rule twenty-two C. It was seconded by Council Brown. Any discussion on the motion to invoke Rule twenty-two C? Yes, Council Fenton?
Mr. President, that means we already took first step at a prior meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we're on discussion on the motion to invoke Rule twenty-two C. Seeing no further discussion, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on the motion to invoke Rule twenty-two C, which will allow the ordinance to be finally passed this evening.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield? Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yeah.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The ordinance shall be considered finally passed. At this time, uh, we've arrived at an executive session portion of the meeting. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
So, the motion to enter executive session will need to be made, um, using the specific language that is, uh, on the agenda.
Mr. President, have we taken care of, uh, all the other issues?
Yes, the, the other, these other two items are related to the executive session. So, again, we're at the executive session, but I need a motion, um, using the language associated with the executive session.
Uh, Mr. President?
So moved.
Okay.
I make a motion that we move, um, this item to the executive session. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Council Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion, uh, that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, where the Law Department has declared, uh, that such a discussion may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of this public body, which they have. Uh, the council will reconvene in open session to vote on the matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion has been second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please, uh, call the role on the motion to enter executive session.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Council Fenton?
Yes.
Council Perez?
Yes.
Council Whitfield? Council Whitfield?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Council Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst? Absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The council will now enter executive session. Uh, for members of the public, we'll ask at this time, um, that you will depart the chamber, and I'll ask that the detail officer on duty proceed to seal the chamber. Uh, for Focus Springfield, um, and members participating remotely, Focus Springfield is going to open the executive session link that was emailed to you by council staff earlier today. It will be necessary for you to log into that particular executive session link, where I will be reopening the meeting. At the conclusion of executive session, we will rejoin the public session link, which is the link that you are currently on. So, at this time, uh, we will be entering the executive session link. All right, the council will, uh, reconvene in open session. Madam Clerk, please call the role on the open session.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield, absent Council Govan?
Yes.
Yes, present, Council Allen?
Present.
Present, Council Brown?
Present.
Present, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Present.
Present, Council Edwards?
Present.
Present, Council Curran?
Present.
Present, Council Dabila?
Present.
Present, Council Letterman?
Present. Madam Clerk, please recognize Council Whitfield.
Council Whitfield?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, please let the record reflect, Council Curran has joined us now in person. Please call item thirty-two.
Appropriation order of taking for taking damages for a portion of ninety to one-twenty Tapley Street.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any further, uh, information to be offered by the DPW Director or by, uh, the Law Department prior to our vote on this matter?
Uh, none for me, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing no further discussion, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on approval of item thirty-two, order for taking damages.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Counselor. I'm sorry. Uh, did, did, has the body voted on the appropriations order?
This is the appropriation order.
Oh, my mistake. Sorry to interrupt.
Madam Clerk, please recommence with the roll call.
Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yeah.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Council Dabila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes, the votes are sufficient. The appropriation order is approved. Madam Clerk, please call item thirty-three.
Order of taking for ninety Tapley Street.
Is there any further information to be offered by the Law Department? Seeing none?
None, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion amongst the council prior to our vote? Seeing no further questions or discussion at this time, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the role on the order of taking for ninety Tapley Street. Two-thirds majority vote is required.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Erst, absent Council Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Curran?